We call the Newport City Council meeting tomorrow for Monday, July 8th, 2019, 6:30 PM. Our members of council are present, others include James Johnson, our treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. We need to have one addition to the agenda. We will need to add an executive session personnel after, it would become number eight, and then we will return to number nine. So we need to add an executive session for personnel. That's okay with the council? Okay. And we'll move on. The next item will be to approve the minutes of June 17th, 2019, and I would entertain a motion.
Who can approve the minutes?
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion on the minutes. Hearing that, all those in favor say aye. On the opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. The next is comments by members of the public. Before we go into that, I just wanted, before I forget, I want to just thank the, congratulate the organizers of WAP. It was a very successful first event, beautiful night, lots of people. And then I also want to give compliments and kudos to the REC committee and the REC department for their July 4th events. It was hotter than you know what, but it worked out.
Second year in a row.
Yeah, it worked out. So, and the fireworks, had a lot of compliments on the fireworks. It was very nice this morning. So I just wanted to pass those along. Okay. So first, we do have, under public comment, Jennifer Smith, REC committee update.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, and everyone. My name is Jennifer Smith. I am the chair of the Newport City REC committee, as well as the city resident. And I just wanted to take a minute to come and give an update on some of the things that the REC department, uh, REC committee has been doing, excuse me. So, if you're unaware, we have, at this date, raised almost $6,000 just since January through our different fundraising efforts. Fundraising efforts include the mother-son dance that we had recently, dance is, the bowling tournament, we did Super Bowl Squares, sold ice hop tickets, and many more events than that. Upcoming events do include the golf tournament, we have a coin drop coming up this fall, we also have a street dance event for Aqua Fest. As a committee, we plan a variety of events to try to serve a range of people in the community, and these are some of the examples of events that we've had so far. We're still planning more events. As you may know, the committee does work closely with the REC department when we're planning all of these events and doing the organization of that. And, you know, since we got the land-water conservation grant in $182,000 plus, we've made a commitment to funders that month for the new playground and splash pad at our department. So, in light of recent discussions, I would like to just take a moment to speak about the street dance that's coming up. It's the end of this month, it's a part of the Aqua Fest, and all of the decisions made, all of the, we have a business plan, all of the decisions that were made as far as who was going to be there, was the band, the prices, the location, all of that was a unanimous REC committee decision that was made that are, some of the decisions at our last meeting, but it's been the last couple meetings that we've been trying to figure this all out. I did want to show you, Mr. Mayor and council, this is a map of what it should look like. I should have another one too. Sorry. But, as you can see, when you look at that map, the businesses will be completely accessible. So, it's not affecting the whole Main Street, it's just a section of the Main Street, and businesses will be accessible through sidewalks, they'll be able to get to the Newport Natural Market, Thai Place, and actually Warehouse, it's perfect location because the Warehouse is going to be a part of our event this year, and Warehouse is going to be doing our beer tent, so it's perfect for them. And then, just wanted to, that was the big thing, I want to just add that we are also doing things like promoting the REC committee by setting up at the Farmer's Market and offering free events there at the Farmer's Market, also, we're thinking about, you know, working on a plan to go to Derby Island Day, all those different things. And that's it. The last thing I have is just to invite you, if anyone needs more clarification or has more questions or comments, we are having our monthly meeting this Thursday, right here in the seat of honor, at 6:00 PM, and so all of the REC committee members will be there, hopefully, and can help answer any questions or clarify anything else.
So, you can hear?
Sure.
There is a check, it should cover six tickets for the dance.
Okay.
My husband and I are not attending, we have other commitments, but we, my husband and I were talking about it, and he was like, buy tickets, I can't believe the controversy over the fundraiser for such a good cause.
Awesome.
There's, should cover six tickets. It's completely up to the REC department what you want to do with the six tickets.
Thank you, Melissa, all of that, thank you very much. I appreciate the support of the events that were planned. Mr. Mayor, anything else?
I don't have a, go ahead.
Well, thank you for giving the update. It's really helpful to know in advance what's going to happen. I don't think there's been a big controversy, but I think any controversy has been about the element of surprise, and not knowing that the REC committee has claimed this event as a fundraiser, that was issue number one. You know, finding out that there's been discussions for months about ticket prices, event, that's the number two thing, I think. And I'm curious as to how the decision was made to use the warehouse for the beer tent instead of any other?
Great question. Honestly, we wanted to promote a local business right here on Main Street, and so we thought they're right here, they're convenient, and we've communicated with them, they're excited about supporting the event as well. It was a committee decision that we made as, at one of our committee meetings, and, yeah, we were really trying to support a local business right here on Main Street.
So it wasn't like a competitive bidding process?
No, no, absolutely not. I went to them directly, said, would you like to do this? They said yes, and that was the end, right there.
Well, I could certainly see where that could be controversy, number three. Just, you know, choosing somebody rather than letting businesses, yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
I just want to counter that a little bit.
Sure.
You have mine. A year ago, we had the East Side, and that wasn't a competitive process either, and it didn't seem to stir up any issue. We had the East Side, I believe, do the beer tent on Main Street for the Centennial. I think it's been pretty much left up to the organizers of the event to choose who they're going to use, as far as the beer tent. I know, you know, it was the East Side last year, and it's been, Aqua Fest has used various ones, so I don't think it's ever gone, as far as I know, to a bidding process, as far as for that aspect.
Again, we, as a committee, we just thought, let's support a local business right here on Main Street to try to boost that. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Mayor, I'm telling you, is there a cover for the dance? Did I, did I refer?
Yes, there is a cover charge for the dance, so it's $12 if you buy it ahead of time. You can buy them right here at the REC office or online, it's $20 at the door.
And who's the name, the last kid there?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Did you get a copy for the minutes? You can have mine if you want, but that was the minutes.
I didn't, I probably should know this, but what's the date?
Tomorrow, 22nd.
Oh, yeah, right, during the Aqua Fest, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The next is Ann Sherrill, testing drinking water for PFAS.
Yeah, I'm Ann Sherrill, I had a moratorium for a while, letting people settle in, but council put it back, and I want to talk about the water issue again. We have never talked about getting our water tested, our drinking water tested for PFAS. We have no idea what we're drinking, I mean, I pay my water bill, I drink the water out of the faucet, and yet I don't know how much PFAS I'm taking in. Obviously, in Bennington, they discovered that some people were taking in an enormous amount of PFAS from their wells, and they had to immediately stop using those wells. But the city there, fortunately, gets their water, they said, at a recent meeting of MWA, from the mountains. Our water, however, comes from two wells that sit on the shore of Memphromagog Lake, and obviously, those wells go down to an aquifer, and there's water that comes up from there. But how much contamination is occurring from the lake, and obviously, our water treatment plant is putting, correct me if I'm wrong, about 15,000 gallons of water per day after the treatment into that water, but it's not treated for PFAS. So we are building up the amount of PFAS in the lake, and we've been doing that for years, and we don't know what's in our drinking water. So, I don't think you've tested for PFAS, it should be done immediately so that we know what our level is. We should get a jump on many other places that may be testing as well, because you know, if there's state money available, and we're high in PFAS, and we wait and wait and wait, there'll be a line for who's going to have treatment first. And while they may be contaminating Lake Champlain as well, we know from experience that if some lake is going to get cleaned up first, it's going to be Lake Champlain and not Lake Memphromagog. And I want you to think about, that's just the water, drinking water. I want you to think about also the fact that we've been spraying concentrated PFAS on the land in terms of the sludge for the longest time, until we found out that it had too much arsen in it, and we couldn't do it anymore. But that was even more PFAS that was added to the area around the lake. And I want you to think also of your legacy. Do you want your legacy, when you leave the council, to be that you did everything to protect us and our water that we drink and our lake, or do you want to sort of slop it off to A&R, the state, and say, well, they haven't said we should do this, so we don't have to do this yet? Remember how well the state protected us in the EB5 scandal?
All right, that's it. EB5 is over and done with.
It is over.
Excuse me, but, okay, that's enough. We don't need to go into EB5.
Oh, but I want to know.
No, that's enough.
I want to know, Ann, my two questions, Ann.
Let us answer the question. You asked a question about the testing. Tom Burnier is here, he can answer the question, but when you get into EB5, that's old news and has nothing to do with the PFAS.
No.
No, it does not, it has nothing to do with PFAS and the A&R. So, Mr. Burnier, you have, I believe, a well is going to be tested within?
We have, the city has two wells, and they are both about 300 feet deep, gravel-packed wells. We have great, great water. I live in the city, and I drink the water every day.
So do I.
I can't remember, I'd have to look back in the files, but back when Bennington was a big issue, the state asked everybody to test their water, so we had tested our water, I can find those results. We had, we were well below any limits that were a problem anywhere. I don't know what the 15,000 gallons was that we were talking about, that, for me, I'm not sure what.
She was referring to the wastewater plant, not the water treatment plant, the wastewater plant.
Oh, well, that's coming down the pipe, as far as the state goes, for testing for PFAS. We haven't started testing there yet, but they are going to make us test for that, as far as our drinking water. We have tested, and I'm sure we stick to their criteria. If they're going to add it to the list that we want to test every year, we'll be testing every year, as far as I'm concerned, our water is great water.
So you're not testing every year?
No.
I, I think we shouldn't go just by what the state requires, we should be going by what's necessary for us to keep us safe. And I do want to know the results of that test and how long ago it was.
Can you make a note to get that information? Thank you. All right. And now we'll move on. The next item is zoning violations update. Charlie Elliott is here to discuss some zoning violations. Charlie?
The reason I'm here is we have issues with different people, and a lot of times, like, good cooperation, things get cleaned up, sometimes it takes time, and in other situations, people simply take advantage of the system, and knowing that I cannot find them, et cetera, unless you, as the council, authorize it, and authorize the involvement of the city attorney. And with that, I have three people who I've been working with, not for two days, but in some cases for two to three years. The first is at Part 31 West Main Street, that's owned by Kevin Kincaid, involves a building that's in serious disrepair, and I talked to him, he says he'll do something that never happens. Another one is owned by John and Deborah Cogan on Cottage Street. We've been trying, not just mine, but a lot from Public Works, to have him clean up issues there. We tried for a long time to get one car removed, it was finally this fall, Tom got the go-ahead, he removed the car. John didn't. That's the only thing that's been moved from the property now in over two years. And the third one is 236 Pleasant Street, that's owned by Winston-Jennison Johnson. That building is in extremely poor shape, the last people who tried to own it lost it, they couldn't maintain it, to get it fixed up. This past winter, it was a major fortress, and so on, all collapsed under the weight of snow that had fallen down. There is a massive amount of garbage in that particular situation, it's also a health issue, along with a lot of tires and other debris around the building. And I think, in all three of these cases, it's not a matter of inability to comply with our zoning by law, our water, clean up and at least secure the properties. And so I think that we need to seriously think, ask the court to give us authorization to start levying fines for these three people.
I know, I was going to say, I know the first one has been on for years, it's come to this table, before, even before two years ago, it's been at least five or six years that that's been discussed here, that one property, and it was always, they were going to do something, do something, do something, and then nothing ever happened, other, at least one on here, one of them have on here, down below, that you're not recommending, they've, they've attempted to do things, and that's what you like to see if you speak to someone, they make an effort, where these other ones have made no efforts.
Right, right. There is another issue, and there's one not on the list because it's too early, but I also would like to talk to the attorney, because we do have situations in which it's, you're dealing with people's inability more than the lack of willingness, and I'd like to talk to the attorney and see what alternatives we might have available to us to try to work with those people. And one on the bottom of the page, I talked to him, I had a good rapport with him, talked to him, encouraged him, he does a little bit, and then it stops, and they come back eventually, and start pounding him again into a little more.
But it's an improvement from what it was, yeah.
So, I, I don't think that that would be good to try necessarily taking to court, because I don't think it could improve his response rate, and I see that in some other situations that are coming up, where, you know, the traditional, we're going to get a court, court to find you, just won't work because of his inability, sometimes it's just point-blank financial.
But if they can do it, they should.
These top three here, I don't feel that's the situation, I think it's, the ability is there, it's a matter of they're trying to maximize their profits, and they just ignore and promise and then do nothing.
I guess, I'm familiar with Mr. Kincaid's property. Is it secure, or is it accessible?
It's not really secured, no.
Okay.
Windows, doors, et cetera, are all open.
And the 236 Pleasant, is that the green building up on the corner?
Yes.
Okay, I can see that's wide open.
That's wide open.
That's wide open, so, now, the other one, is that trash in the yard and not the building?
The building, I think, is also full of storage, I think the individual was a hoarder. There's nobody trying to live in it, I doubt if that building is livable at this point in time.
Nobody lives in it.
Right.
But the building itself is secure, is the outside?
As far as I know, it's pretty much secured from the outside.
I really agree with him that, over the short term, can you give people a chance to do something? And, you know, six months, okay, talk to them again, but after a year, two years, you know, it is time for the attorney to receive a letter, send a letter, not receive.
Send a letter, probably, send a letter.
And they probably will ignore it, and there's still other means for us if we have to, you know.
Actually, this would give us the, because we can't just find them, we have to get permission from the environmental court to find them, so, basically, I think what you're looking for is permission to talk to the attorney, to get permission so that we can start finding them, because I think until you start finding them, they don't really have any teeth in the game.
I think the, for these three, I think money would be the motivator.
Other questions from council members? Then, we would need a motion to authorize the zoning administrator to contact the city attorney about taking, he called it legal action, it was really, yeah, what it is, is to find them, legal action.
Yeah, so moved.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, discussion?
I would like a copy of that list, and I wonder why it wasn't in the early documents provided with the agenda? There's no particular reason that wouldn't have been?
So, those, that memo was stamped confidential because these matters are sensitive, we'd like the people who are affected to receive the notice before the press, so they find out legitimately from the city that there's a notice of violation. These three individuals have all received the notice of violation, the other individuals are not in the violation stage, so that's why the press has not received a copy of that, instead, we're talking about it on the record.
Well, it's on the record now, so I get a copy now.
Yes.
With the names.
It's got, it's up to you if you want that redacted.
Well, you can't not, because you're discussing it at the table.
Yeah, we discussed this, so now we have to provide this.
You can redact those names on the document.
No, you actually can't, it's public now.
Public, because Charlie mentioned the names.
He mentioned the two bottom names, I don't think.
No, not, assuming not the two bottom ones. No, only the top ones.
Right, right.
No, but the document is now public, because it's been discussed at a public meeting in open session, in front of everybody, it's not a, if you didn't want to, that would have had to have been held back, I'm just commenting, so it's the way it goes.
You can check with your attorney if you want to. They, I mean, they can argue they're supposed to, they're supposed to do exactly what they're supposed to do.
Probably should have just been the address, even then you can find out.
Right.
Well, the first, we've already mentioned the address and the name.
Right, that's why I'm suggesting we can redact.
I don't know why we can't redact the names on the bottom that we haven't discussed.
You can't do it, it's already a public document, out on the table, it's not a behind-close-doors document.
You have three days and much to respond, so if we search that, if we're right, we'll supply it. If we can protect the people who have not been mentioned, then I think we should try to do that. Once a formal notice of violation is issued, if the bottom two get to that point, then I think it becomes public.
That's actually not relevant to say, it's the issue of, when you put a document on the table, it is now a public document, it is not, you can't pull it back off and say, oh, we didn't want to do that. I'm sorry, it's just the way it is, so, I mean, if you want to hold it back for three days, but it's public, it was public when the meeting started, basically.
I think she's right on that one. Really do.
It's an open meeting.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not able to get the guy on the bottom.
Well, that's, yeah, I know, that's my, that's, I know, we should have had that probably separate, because these people are not in violation, he just mentioned, that's the problem, I don't want them, when they're making efforts, to be dragged through the mud, as we say, where the top ones are blatant.
I can't pull you out, but that's.
I think it's our responsibility to know the rules, and we screwed this one up, and we need to rectify it by making it public now, I don't think we need to wait three days, because we know we're wrong, we're going to lose that one. So I'm happy to provide my copy.
I think it's okay to make an effort to protect the innocent, so.
Of course, and then, I think, lesson learned is that we make public public.
We apologize, but.
And then confidential needs to be confidential and not addressed on the agenda.
Well, I think the biggest problem is that we've got all the names on one document.
Right.
Right.
And we probably should, if we're going to do something like this, it should be one name per document, and then we run into the problem of, what do you give out, you just give out the ones that we talked about?
Of course, technically, we probably could have had this an executive session, because we were talking a court case.
That's true.
But we didn't do that either, this should have probably been an executive session item, because we're talking about strategy, not strategy, but we were talking about court.
So I would say that moving forward, I mean, it's already, it's already in the press's hands, so it's done.
Yep.
Well, it's on your camera too, I mean, it's, everybody in the room is public, I mean, perfectly. A lot of why I'm sorry.
Yes, I would like to have a copy, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have any problem with the notice of violations going forward, because that's what the process that's in existence allows us to do, is that people who have not been served a violation, that I feel the council has a right to protect.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I just want to say that I don't think any of us are arguing that had you chosen to bring a document to the table with those names struck out, that we would have had a problem with it. You know, I think the issue is that, you know, it is what it is, and it's, it's not even, I'm, it's not even. And it's, it's not even, I'm, it's not even an eagerness to publish everyone's name. It's just the principle that they're at a certain point. And.
Oh, I don't know. A lot of these things, people love publishing names because negative news sells. That's how I feel on some of the news stories, but that's all I guess. That's my only editorial comment.
We're going to publish your name.
No, that's okay. That's just an editorial comment. Did we vote on that yet? No, we didn't. And all those, did we vote on that?
Yeah, I made the motion.
We didn't vote on that yet, no, we didn't vote on that. So all those in favor of having the zoning administrator contact the attorney regarding the first three properties, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, so what about the last two names? How are you going to handle that?
They're not part of the, they're not part of.
Not a violation?
Not a violation.
Okay. And the attorney, the city attorney now is who?
Sizzle Page and Fletcher.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Johnson, new business. Seven things, oh, gee.
We got one application for the Niles Fund, a budget down to meet the criteria in a number of years between requests is right amount of time, so.
I want to, may I ask you?
If we're going to, if it's, if it's, no, Mr. Johnson, if we're discussing Niles Fund, I think we better go in an executive session. That has financial information of the individual. And if we're going to make an issue of documents, I think from now on, the more I think about it, the more I think we better start going to an executive session for Niles Fund for the discussion, but then vote in public. Because they could technically say they want that document because we're discussing it at this table.
That's right.
And it's never been done, but it has their people's financial and it's a financial assistance program. And the names are supposed to be confidential.
Yeah, they have no right to the financial end of it.
No, but they could get the name off it and all that. And that, you know, a lot of people do that in confidential. So personally, I think we should have an executive session to discuss that.
And may I say that it's been kind of an unwritten courtesy on the part of the members of the press sitting here that we don't ask questions about and we don't ask to look at it. But it is very true that once it hits the table, it's public. So if you're trying to protect people's privacy, then you're, you're in a bind. I think we were doing it so that you didn't have to go in and out of executive session every time and all that.
But I think we better from now on.
I think the other members of the press would agree with that comment, sort of. Well, that's a.
I, my, my problem with it is I'm not sure under what part of the executive session rules, you know, what the, I, I mean, I'm not, I, I agree with.
I know, that's the problem, I don't know how we do it. But I don't want people's, you know, I'm basically, I know what just happened. I know for 20 years, I've been on here, no one's ever asked. But there's always going to be that opportunity where one of you can say, we want to see the document. And with this whole thing, I don't want, I don't want that because people, I feel that in confidence.
I don't think an applicant's dire straits financial situation, anybody's business, but.
Right. I do too.
Now, you can authorize me to approve these things. I have the rules, I know what they, where they can get it, where they can't. You just authorize me to approve those things and I'll do it and nobody will ever see it.
That may be the way to go in the future. I really do think that.
I don't have a problem with that either.
No, but I think we should do that. Yeah, we could make a motion, we could have a motion.
Hold what you want. I'll hold this until next one's hot.
Or we could make a motion, you could have someone make a motion, like they did to authorize me to sign warrants on behalf, whatever. They could have a motion to authorize you to approve the Niles Fund. Because it's, it's, there's a.
The criteria is very, very strict.
There's a criteria, very strict criteria, there's a, there's, right, it's set by the court, the probate court, everything. And so. Did you have something?
I guess, so if it's okay, Jim can hold that one until next time. So we just have a little time to think about what the appropriate approach to do and if we, you know, at the next meeting, if we, it's decided to hand it over to Jim to do. But I think we should not just immediately react to the, to what just happened. I think we should just take the two weeks and move from there. Yeah, I mean, we either.
I'll do whatever you want. I'll do whatever I told you to do.
No, we can see if it's something that can come under, we look under the, under the rules of executive session. And if it's allowable under executive session, we can move ahead with executive session. If it's not allowable under the rules of executive session, then we can discuss and vote whether we want to just turn it over to Jim to do.
Joe, who's first?
Mr. Mayor, you know, obviously, I don't know anything about this and personally, I don't want to. But one thing I am not sure of is what, how much difference the person's name on the application makes. I mean, Mr. Johnson certifies how often they've applied. He presents you with financial information, but if you have a number on the sheet, it's six of one, half dozen of the other. I mean, I've never heard anyone say, Pam? Are you kidding? Not in a million years. And I don't, you know, I've been coming to a bunch of these meetings. So that might be a solution, that, you know, any information is disassociated with a name and a sheet of numbers is not that interesting. Just, just a suggestion. My only thought on that, Joe, is everybody knows what the Niles Fund is for. If a name yourself, you know, connected with that, what do you know, why they're doing it?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's everyone's right to know who's applying for what. It'd be just like people going, say, to your office and applying, not my, maybe not your office, but whatever office, applying for benefits. I don't think that's all over whatever, the names. Am I correct? It's confidentiality.
I'll do whatever you guys, you guys decide, so you tell me.
So I think we, we're just going to, let's have a motion to table the Niles Fund request so that we know where to have it on the next agenda.
Move to table the Niles Fund request to the next meeting.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? General.
Shouldn't you also check with the probate court to find out if Jim is going to sign against the, it is a trust, so if there are two people's in the trust.
Good point, I forgot about probate. Because I could have asked the person directly.
No longer judge.
No, I know, but he did about 10 million of them.
So now you have a motion.
So we have a motion second, anything else?
So has the council ever denied a Niles Fund request that you're aware of? Mr. Mayor, you've been there, been here a long time.
No. They had, only in the, how many years ago did they have to change the criteria because probate said they were running out of money? Remember?
It was probably 10 years ago.
10 years ago, there was more requests coming in than it could financially do. So that's why they changed the whole structure as far as you can only apply, what, once and?
Twice every five years.
Twice every five years.
Because it seems to me that, could be 15 years ago, this conversation came up, that you couldn't figure out a way to do it off the record. Or some, you know, it was challenging, I mean, man.
My mayor does know, it's always come to this, they've always just brought it up on the new business.
I know, I know, so.
So.
I don't know if you can do it or not, just a suggestion.
All right, we had a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's tabled. Other new business?
Yeah, I've got two vendor permits. One is for Reg and Jen Thoreau. They're running the, the cheese grill up across from Cumberland Farms. And the other one is the Perry running Kurt's Snack Bar. That's up in the yard of Perry Tire on East Main Street. They just realized it needs permits. So now we got, or we will have this one approved. They paid the fee, they filled out the application, how are you to approve of those?
So we need a motion to approve both vendor permits. So choose.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries.
And the last thing I got, I need council to approve the line of credit for Somerset Bank for a million dollars. Now, we haven't used this thing in a long, long time, but it's just there for safeguard. We don't pay anything unless we borrow money. And we've never, when I first got here, we were borrowing a whole million dollars every year, but the last 10 or 12 years, we haven't borrowed any. But it's good to have it fall back on just in case.
That's fair.
So I just need to have approval for that. Motion for approval, and everybody's got to sign the document.
So we need a motion to approve the line of credit with the Somerset Bank and the amount of 1 million dollars. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion on that?
So it sounds like that's been the case for a very long time. It's always been a million and every so often, you have to renew it?
Every year.
Every year.
We did it last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
About this time. Every July 1st. So, better vote on that before.
Is it arbitrary?
No, it's just.
Or when advanced, no, this is just a line of credit, okay.
If you need it, you borrow it.
Okay.
You don't pay anything unless you borrow.
Okay.
So motion made, seconded, any other discussion? Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries.
Okay, they're waiting to sign a line above your name. And I think that's all.
Oh, yeah, don't get confused, sign the right line.
No, it got your name on there.
Oh, your name on there.
You know where to sign this on.
Is it capital X or a little x?
That was your full name. That's all I got, Paul.
Okay.
You forgot the assignment, Jim.
I will, I'll get it back here. I've got more places I want to sign.
There. That's what you said, that's it?
Okay.
That's it.
That's it.
Mr. Chairman, new business? Does he know any new business?
No.
I don't have any new business, new business.
We do have something very quick. We are, as part of our solid waste implementation plan, required to do some public outreach on food scraps for our large generators and businesses. So that would be, for example, the hospital, United Christian Academy, Newport City Elementary School, Bel Air. So I sent out an invitation, we're going to host a meeting in this room in collaboration with Barton Coventry Lowell and Newport and with Casella Organics. And members of the Agency of National Resources will be there. So one hour meeting on Monday, July 22nd, in this room, from 5:00 to 6:00, just before our regularly scheduled council meeting. And then we get to fulfill one of our solid waste implementation plan criteria for year five. And then soon, I believe, the August 5th regularly scheduled council meeting will host a public meeting on our solid waste implementation plan to get feedback on new and existing programs. And they'll have Reg and Ira present and I'll invite Tom so that we can be available. And that will be in addition, I think, on the August 5th meeting. And that's my new business.
So is this other meeting about the waste scraps? Is that, can anybody come to that as a?
Oh, yeah, it's, well, you'll see it, it's, it's part of the city of Newport's responsibilities. And we'll put it on the marquee as well as, I've got some posters here, if folks would like that. So I circulated it today to our, our large food scrap generators and our haulers. They don't have any idea how many people we'll get. So we never know, we're going to hold it in this room, short and sweet. It helps us fulfill our criteria, helps us get the word out. And I asked the people that I emailed it to, please feel free to circulate in case I miss somebody because I don't have every single generator on my list. So we're trying, yes.
Anything else on the new business?
No, thank you.
Okay. Old business, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Three things, actually. So we talked at our last meeting about the potential of putting up some signs with no engine breaks, perhaps on the dirty road. I was hoping we would revisit that and talk about potential noise ordinance. I know since that meeting, the noise in my neighborhood with motorcycles and loud trucks has been ridiculous. And I, I think we need to take some kind of action, make some kind of public notice that that's just not acceptable, to behave like that with vehicles in public.
There is a noise ordinance.
Well, we have a noise ordinance. Can we, what would it take to put, because I've heard of Jake breaks coming through the ledges at my apartment farther down from you on Sias. And I was wondering if, maybe we could, what if we put up a sign? Is that, we have to have an ordinance to do something like that about Jake? The towns that have Jake break signs, do they have ordinances against them? Is that how they're allowed to put them up?
Yes, I believe they do, I think they have an ordinance for those.
So maybe we have to look into the, an ordinance regarding Jake breaks coming down East Main.
Yeah, I don't think there's a noise issue, it's just you can't use a Jake break. Yeah, correct, because it is loud in residential.
You and I, we've spoken about it.
The towns that I've seen have a sign that says things like, please, as a courtesy, no engine breaks in town. I don't know if that would require an ordinance, but it sounds like just as a courtesy.
Or we could be, put a sign that says, please, no Jake breaks.
Yeah.
See if it does anything, I don't know, maybe start with that.
I know when I drive through towns that have signs like that, I feel like, oh, this town really cares about the, the quality of life for their residents. So it's a nice little sign to come across.
Okay.
Oh, that's that, okay, so that's one.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was looking at you to go, go on.
Okay, number two. I should have asked this earlier, actually, when the REIT committee was giving their report. But I was wondering, as you were making your plans for the Aquafest Street Dance, if you, as a committee, filled out the large event application form to see what it's like to go through that process?
We did not. We work closely with the REIT department. Jess said that every meeting and oversees all the whole planning process as well as, I know that she's gone to all of the department heads and talked to them about what do they need. And do I know what the process is like? Not exactly, but I am on the committee that is working on that event process, event planning, that committee with a few other people. So we're working on that as well. So I did not go through the process, seen the application.
I, I wonder, and that would be Jess's question, if that would have been helpful in people knowing more about what was happening and for the REIT committee themselves to be able to experience what it's like to, to do the full effect of a large event. So it sounds like they've had some latitude in making those decisions that other event organizers don't have.
So we, the Recreation Committee is a city, is a council appointed committee, so they're not considered a third-party event organizer, they're considered a portion of the city, a portion of the REIT department, I guess you could say. So they don't have to go through that process. They have actually reviewed the third-party events policy after the initial discussions that we had back in, almost in early June, when you mentioned that. I actually did bring it to them at their next meeting and said, will you guys have a look at this and let me know what you think? And then since then, there's been some progress, been putting a committee together. So they've had some direct input and are getting a little bit more involved with that. So I'm not sure that, so their Aquafest planning was on their meeting agendas all the way through for the last however many months that they've been working on that. So similar to the other events that they run, there's public, there's opportunity for the public to be there, not to mention the fact that the board is completely made up of, you know, the public. So the opportunity, anything to chime in on any event planning, whether it's Aquafest, you know, whether it's the street dance or anything else, would be to attend those REIT committee meetings and then view minutes that are posted online and available.
So that puts the onus on whoever wants the information, whereas any other event planner has to come here and inform everybody. Personally, I would like to see some consistency in that process.
So the bylaws for the REIT committee do give them a certain latitude. And over the years. And over the years, the REIT committee has portrayed that latitude. Council has not micromanaged them or gotten involved. And their bylaws specifically say that they are to do fundraising. So when they came forward with that idea, we were quite pleased. They've bitten off a lot to meet the $182,510. We're pretty happy about that. They don't, they don't qualify for the events committee, they have their own set of bylaws. That was, council proved, I think, in October.
Yeah, and I also think that the difference between them and a third-party event organizer is, third-party event organizers have their own meetings, the Parks and Rec Director and the park staff are not involved with any of that. Whereas with the REIT committee, there's, there's direct interaction, very frequent interaction, more so than third-party event organizers. So any concerns or anything like that, you know, I can address pretty regularly with them as the planning process goes, versus when someone else is putting together their proposal, it's pretty much all together by the time they approach you guys.
And I just wonder, too, if, if part of the benefit of being a city, a city committee, you know, all of our funding is going back to the city, like we have the trust fund, all of our money is going back to going into the Gardner Park. I don't know if that...
And part of the, what I see as the REIT committee's role, and maybe it's a little bit selfish on my part, is it expands, it expands the capacity of the Recreation Department. So where, where we don't have the capacity to offer all these other events and programs, we have this group of volunteers that is directly interacting with the Recreation Department, but is taking on a lot more workload than they'd be able to accomplish. So I think that there's a difference there between them and a third-party event organizer that's really an external entity, that's not working as closely within the city as these guys are.
Plus the events policy has expired. So right now we have...
Touche.
I guess my only question is, normally a committee doesn't have, most committees don't have the authority to make decisions. So for me, if I want to do something, that's fine, but somebody other than the committee has to make the final decision, whether it's you as the REIT director. And when I looked at this map, I was so damn happy. I think they did an incredible job putting this map together. I don't know who did it, but there's no question about anything when we look at this.
And that's a product of the partnership between the REIT department and the REIT committee. You know, when they do events, we might give like a 25% support come from the REIT department, but they're giving three quarters of the workload.
So, so my concern is, if we let them go wild, who is actually responsible if something happens at that event? It's not the organizers, it's the city.
Sounds like us would be responsible.
Right, so, so, so maybe, you know, if something really bad happened, we have to borrow that million dollars.
No, you've got an insurance policy that covers this. They're under the auspices of the city, so they fall under our insurance. You'd be covered just as if something, God forbid, happened, and that there wasn't.
It's just like when Aquafest was put on by the REIT committee. If something happened, it was under the auspices of the city. When, when the REIT, way back, I think you were on that committee, right? When Aquafest, it was, even though the REIT committee, Steve, when you organized the Aquafest under the REIT committee, it was still under the auspices of the REIT department and the city. So if something happened, it was the city.
And we never had to get a permit for anything, being under the city.
Because you're part of the city, it's part of the city, city.
It's part of the city.
We would talk about it, and here it would, would do all the backbone, and if he were to come to the council, and everything passed, whatever we wanted, he would go along with
Yeah.
He would succeed.
I don't, I think, I agree with Jess, I don't, I don't think the city's a, be a third-party to itself. So I don't think they need, they should come and tell you what's going on. But here's a good example of liaisons are supposed to do.
Yes.
When I was on the council, I was a liaison to REIT committee for years. I drove the meeting, come back to council meetings, and said what they planned on doing, so everybody knew. But the purpose of the REIT committee, back then, it should be today, is to raise money to put on events, to put more events in the city, so the REIT department doesn't have to do it. That's the purpose of that REIT committee. New events, so the REIT department doesn't have to budget for all these extra events. That's its sole purpose. And all the money is supposed to go into a REIT trust. Now, the authority in the council does that. Any money spent on that REIT trust could be approved by the council. They just can't spend the money. But that's their purpose. And I don't see, other than letting the council know what's going on, the advantage to fill another permit. I don't understand why the city would have to fill out a permit for itself. That's just me.
I thought it was great. I can remember Charlie Cronkite, our meeting was, you think you can handle this? We said, watch us, we can. But he brought it too thick for the council. We, we look forward to, and every year, a new council person would be on, wanted to go to the place, and so we never had the same. I don't know if you ever, I can't remember who you kind of be.
I was the liaison to Public Works.
Yeah.
And, and the problem with liaisons, Jim's right. He went to the meetings, he brought things back to the council. Over the years, we had some council members that felt, being a liaison, they could tell the department what they were supposed to do.
Yeah, it's true.
You know, I do remember.
I do remember, yes.
You know, and for me, being a liaison, would just go over, see the guys, I knew all of them, you know, they're all gone now.
We've only had liaisons, I think the first year I was on the council, because I was to the REIT department. Then it went away after that first year, and then it came back, when Jack and Steve were on the council for like one year, and then it seemed to just vanish again. Because I think, over the years, some people, yeah, they said, oh, I'm a liaison, I can dictate to the police department, or I can dictate whatever, yeah. So I think that's why it kinda, I understand the, the value of the liaison, I really do, but some people, they think it gives them the authority to kind of micro, well, I say micro-manage, but to kind of dictate and give orders, when they can't.
Now, to, Julie's, Julie, Julie's concerned, I mean, maybe when you have a committee meeting, a copy of minutes can go to the council. And they know what's going on at a council meeting. Same as a liaison coming back and reporting, it's the same thing.
One of the other things that I've set up is to have, department heads present at more meetings as well. So instead of the liaison model, you have direct access to the department heads, and when you need subject matter expertise, I mean, you never know what's gonna come up at one of these meetings. And there's nothing worse than getting blindsided, or surprised, or if you gave me, if you asked me in advance, I could have researched that for you and had the information available. And that's the model that we like. So that's one of the reasons why you see the department heads at the meetings so much, so that they can respond.
I was contacted, I was contacted by a couple merchants who were concerned that the entire street and sidewalk was gonna be closed. And then I, so I immediately talked to Jess, and she says, oh no, the sidewalk on the side of the Thai restaurant, the Mac Center, all that, is wide open. So people will be able to get to all those businesses. Because the side of the street you're on is this, the side over there. So that alleviated, or laid their fears to rest, that thing. So that was the only, so I immediately just contacted Jess about it, and they were very happy and okay with that.
And I certainly appreciate all of the efforts of the REIT committee. It's certainly not a job that I would take on lightly, so thank you very much. I think this is a really good example of why it's important to test our, our processes. Even though it is a, an arm of the city, so to speak, I think being able to experience the same thing that third-party event organizers put on is valuable. And even more valuable is having us know what's going on. Like Laura just said, when we're blindsided, we can't, I can't defend your decisions when I have no idea what those decisions were, how they came to be. And if the standard events procedure had been followed, and this is, you know, I'm not saying you should have known this, or we all should have known this back then, but moving forward, I think it would have, there would have been no controversy at all if we'd had that discussion, oh, well, what about the sidewalk? Can people go to the Thai restaurant? You know, those questions would have answered, been answered publicly. I think there's a lot of value to that, whether you have to do it, or whether you voluntarily do it. There's value in transparency.
And it sounds like we're going to work on getting the new events to the council.
Great, thank you.
You should do a follow-up.
Yes, the third, actually. Jen mentioned the events policy committee, just wondering how people were chosen. I think you've had a couple of meetings, wondering how, where we stand in the process of coming up with a proposed events policy.
Well, the motion said two council members, the REIT director, a member of the REIT committee?
Yep.
No, REIT committee?
And two organizers.
And two organizers.
Yep.
So I wasn't involved with that. I left it up to Jess and Laura to do that.
We've held two meetings, the third one's scheduled for Friday morning. I'll be warning it tomorrow morning. First question, members of this committee, Melissa has graciously agreed to facilitate it. Dan is the other council member, as you know. Jen Smith is the chair of the Recreation Committee. REIT committee Jamie Comtoy, she's had a lot of experience putting on events. She did the, the cancer, where you walk.
There'd be like a lot of...
And the Centennial.
And the Centennial. Dana Lesfrance, who's doing the motorcycle event at the end of this month. Mary Pat Goulding, who's put on numerous events with the REIT committee over the years. City clerk and treasurer Jim Johnson, Parks and Rec Director Jess Booth, and city manager Laura Dahl. So the first meeting was held on the 28th. We revisited the mayor's instructions, talked about timelines. I don't know if we're gonna be able to make a June, July 22nd presentation to the council, but I have it etched in, thinking optimistically we'll be able to bring a final product, or a proposed product. We looked at our existing process, and then we looked at other municipalities' permits and ordinances. And then we decided that we would, let me just see if I've got my records here from meeting number two, it would be so cool if I did. Meeting number two, we decided to winnow our list down to the Montpelier guidebook and permit process. We thought that was most applicable to the city of Newport. We realized that we probably need to look at road shut-offs, Jess, road shut-offs, and actually you guys, too, assembly.
Yeah, because it sort of comes down to three different groups, so it's, and they involve, whether you're doing public assembly, whether you're doing road closures, and then if it's just like a normal event, that, you know, sweep dances or...
Or baby shower.
Baby, yeah, things. So we talked about that, and then we thought, oh, well, then maybe we need a, you know, we need a application for this, 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 and this. And then we said, well, that's probably gonna be too onerous for people, and too difficult. So we looked at a model of where all three different types are, can be in one permit, and it can be coded, so that if you're just doing public assembly, you can ignore all the ones that don't have the public assembly, you know, simplify it. So anyway, we tried to simplify the process that way. It was really interesting, the conversation that happened, and it was interesting from some of the members who talked about, one person who was doing, it was gonna be the motorcycle event, actually, and he said, geez, I didn't really realize, and someone else echoed the same thing, I had no idea what has to take place in order for something to happen. I only came, I had to fill out a permit because I wanted, you know, waived fees, but I had no idea everything that goes on, to make something look like nothing, you just get out there and do it. So that was pretty eye-opening for all of us. And we, the Montpelier guide, Montpelier guide, which they borrowed from Rutland, of course everybody works with it to make it fit their situation, there was, it's very, it's a really good guide. It's not that you have to do everything in it, but if you come and you say, I want to put on an event, and you have the guide, you know what's involved. So people know, can know upfront what is involved, what the things you should be considering, what you need to do. And it was very, again, pretty unanimous, everybody thought it would be very, very helpful. Couple of people said, boy, if I'd known, if I had this ahead of time, it would have been a lot easier for me to go ahead and plan what I needed to plan. So having this guide, and it's a neutral guide, it's not saying you can, you know, it's just a guide, would probably be very beneficial, and that's kind of what we're concentrating on right now. And after that, the next other pieces will come to it. But I, you know, I'm sort of dominating this.
Well, no, it's exactly, if you go on Montpelier events, if you want to take a look at that, the guide will open up, and you can take a look at it, and hopefully be as impressed with it as we were. We have permission to plagiarize it, to meet our needs, and we're building a permit, the actual permit process to match the guide.
Right.
Yeah, but the permit will coincide with the guide. And we hope that it's, we hope people will appreciate its value that it will bring to the community. There's still...
If you do, if anyone does go on to look at it, it says, you know, special event and street closure, and it's a little, it concentrates a lot on street closure, and we'll be probably editing a lot of that out of it, because it's not, you know, Montpelier, they got closed up all the time. So if you look at it, don't get all up in an uproar about, oh, it's, you know, things like that, but it's a guide. And so, again, just read it, if you can read it with an open mind, if you have that capability to do that, and take a look at it, and...
We went through every paragraph of it, and made modifications to meet the city's needs. So at the next meeting, if we can, if we can get the work done, we'll have the bulk of the edits done.
Yeah.
And that will advance us, then we need to design a permit. So that's why I'm not 100% sure we're gonna meet the July 22nd deadline that we set out for ourselves. It might go into August 5th, but I think that the council will have a better product to look at, and that's okay. We're not, we're not losing anything by taking an extra couple of weeks.
I think, looking at it for quite a while, even before we started the process, this will keep Jess from getting 15 phone calls. So anybody who can look at the document and know what they have to do without, every time they come to the line, Jess, what does this line mean? Or, you know, so it should be a time saver. It's totally objective, there'll be nothing subjective about it. So if I don't particularly like something, I can't make my decision based on what I don't like, and I'm good at that. And so I think, Jess and I look eye to eye, and I keep saying, keep it simple, and she looks at me, yes, Dana, keep it simple.
Well, I was at the first meeting. Personally, I don't think the process, the application, the process is the problem. The problem arises when they see the fees at the end, that's when the problem arises. So to me, if there's something included in this permit, that you have some kind of example of what the approximate cost, or what the fee would be for a street closure, what the police department costs and all that stuff, then they can make the decision whether they want to move forward. If you go through the process and then have the fees sprung at the end, that's where the problem comes. It's all about the money.
And I think, and that's a good point, this would have, you know, before you even take a, you know, put your name on an applicant, on a permit application, you can, you can look at the book and figure it out, you know? I mean, it's obviously, you know, it's called, just if you have a question, but, and again, it's not, I think it's, we should probably mention that it's not, okay, on section one of the application, this is what you do. On section two, it's not a guide to fill out the application, it's a guide on the things you need to consider, the things you need to look at, and then we'll add, like, you know, the fees and things. But I want to make that, that piece clear, that it's not how to fill out the application. If you take the advice from the guide, then you probably would breeze through the application pretty easy.
Yeah, really, you can't tell me how much it's gonna cost an event, but, for example, police department, you know, and how I rate per officer.
We have that, right.
If you're gonna have 10, well, you know how much it's gonna cost you. If you have one, it's a lot less.
I know, when I did my research before all that, one other place committees even wanted to know how many barriers you were gonna use, because they had a fee for that. So they kind of spout out, you know, and they knew, this is the cost for a barrier, times how many barriers you were gonna use. That was one that I looked at.
It is likely...
That will be helpful.
Yes, and it is likely, you have established a fee per hour for the police department, this process will need the council to establish a fee for the Public Works Department. So that...
You need to be able to see that when you're...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we'll have all that.
Okay. Any other?
Nope.
Thank you.
That's it, and the old business?
Thank you for that.
Um, I have old business, the city manager, myself, and Ms. Pedersen, we traveled to Williston to see the Chittenden Solid Waste District's recycling facility. They gave us a tour of that, and it's quite the process, it's quite in-depth. They wouldn't let us see the pile of glass in question, that they would not let us see.
The bank retention project.
The what?
It's the bank intention.
Right, I think the main reason is because they were, the A and R's looking into it, and they didn't want, I think there's other reasons, but we then, after touring that facility, we went to see Whitcom, where they're actually stockpiling the crushed glass, which is, I think now, with what they're doing, it's being handled much, handled correctly, it appears to be, what they're doing from this point forward. My big question was what in the past, from this year, rain, what did you do with it? And, you know? And there's still questions about the bank enhancement, whether they needed permits and whether the state blessed it and all that. But with all that said, we then attended the board meeting that night and expressed our concern to the board. Well, their board feels they've done nothing wrong, which, you know, you would expect. They do have an invitation to come to the July 22nd council meeting to give a presentation on their operation for recycling. I'm not sure if they've confirmed yet.
I'm expecting them, I do have it sort of etched out in that agenda, so at this point, I am expecting a presentation from them. The PowerPoint they gave to their own board would be very appropriate to give to us.
Yes.
And it was, it was a great learning opportunity to see how they manage their hour recycling.
Right.
So, if they, if they give us that PowerPoint, the committee will be able to see how it comes in and how it's sorted and, and including their glass. So I think that'll be, it would be a great opportunity for them to come here and to make that presentation.
They seem very open to come here.
Well, I think, you know, the invitation was extended cordially, and I think their response was, you know, cordial and willing to come.
But that was a very, I call it a very useful road trip. It worked out well, so I just wanted to update the council on that, that hopefully they'll be at the next meeting to give a complete presentation of the process of the recycling and everything else. So that's all I had under old business. Any old business? Old business? Old business? No? Then the next meeting date will be Monday, July 22nd, 6:30 PM, here in the council room. Now I need an executive session for closing up.